Okay, well, we're back. And we're just gonna jump right back to the discussion about the mitigation project. And so Dave, I know you had some concerns. Let's just pick up there.
Well, so the biggest concern I have is, as I look at this map, you know, that a lot of the blue section here is, was handled by the mitigation that we already did.
According to Ted, this is all brand-new. This isn't the same at all.
So, so let me, let me take a step back.
Uh-huh.
Here's my concern. We're being asked to make a pretty significant decision within two days, and we don't have the technical experts here. So, to be perfectly blunt, we're just making crap up.
Well, Ted was here.
He was.
And we have the letters that were given from the professional engineers that we sent, as well as, yes, that's the soonest I got them.
I'm not doubting that. I'm just saying that we haven't had time to review them, and we're being asked to, so I don't really like the idea of a basin up above, up by the water tanks. I've talked about that. I've said, "I don't want to do a basin there." Here's the downside. I actually do like the idea of the culverts on Broad Hollow. So if I could get the culverts without the basin, I might actually be willing to do that. But the idea of the basin just is very repugnant to me.
You could do those culverts for less than $2 million.
No, the culverts aren't the $2 million.
Yeah, they're $200,000.
They're $200,000.
Well, we could do one or two here if we picked that project. There's another way to do this. What I see on this map is it does not have any fixing of the tooler problem.
It was never intended to fix the tooler problem.
Well, okay, so that's my point. That's the only mitigation we've been talking about for years, and this is the first time I've heard of this one?
No. We talked about this right after the fire.
I'm way undereducated to vote on this.
We talked about this right after the fire, because the entire project at the beginning was one project. It was one with two basins that were put in there with channel work.
Just my opinion, Carrie.
I know, I'm just going back in history about what we did, and that was based on engineering, state and federal engineering that came to town. Now, Ted has been involved...
Back in history, I would remark about the mudslide over there that I witnessed. There's other canyons.
The mudslide to my home. Four feet of mud around my home. I'm the only one in the whole entire city that has been evacuated for fire, flood, mudslide, and avalanche that all came to my house. So, just so you know, I take this pretty darn seriously. Now, that is a different canyon that that comes out of, but the Broad Hollow Canyon has a history of debris flow and avalanche. We know that.
I hear your opinion. I hear it.
So, one of the things that they did, though, based on the burn scar, we have an opportunity for, yes, a $2 million project that we would never be able to afford ourselves for $50,000.
I don't want that. I have PTSD over the last mitigation.
But what I'm saying is, right now, if we have to spend $15,000 to $20,000 on sandbags...
You don't.
Which we could...
I want one truckload, like a picture I have of Salem today that I took. We could put a pile of sand and a bunch of bags for $300 and help some citizens that want...
Very, very few.
That's all I'm gonna say about that.
Very, very few. When we've looked at the numbers, we looked at how many people, and this is not just a whimsical whatever. This is, this is looking at maps.
Are you talking sandbags?
Sandbags.
Okay, that's not, that's jumping ahead. So, Doral, do you have any more comments or questions?
No.
Okay. Jenna, what about you?
I know, I mean, I know Broad Hollow is, I don't know enough about it. I haven't had enough time. It's hard to study. I know Broad Hollow has issues. I know that. I know that's an issue, and you can go on the state maps and look, because I've looked, right?
The drainage.
After the fire, you can go on the state, I looked to see if mud would ever get to my house. It won't, and it's pretty much where this water is. It might, if there was an extreme situation, get to the corner of my property. So, I mean, I've looked at this. I've seen this. I know this is valid, because I've looked it up on the state, and I know that the Broad Hollow, that's where they were worried about all the mud. I know that. But I don't love the basin up above either. You can see the other one. When you're driving up the mountain in the summertime, you can see the big gouge inside of our mountain, and it's ugly. I hate it.
If it, if we wouldn't have put the basin there, there would have been two more homes there.
So, Mayor?
But we have used it. I talked to Corbett, and he said that it has been, I wish he was still here. He said it has been, it has been worth it, because we've had water in there, not debris, but we've had water. But that much water, if that was running down the street, that's six, that's a six-acre site of water, this deep, if you were putting that all together coming out at one time. We have a significant avalanche up there right now that is full of debris. That avalanche, if it melted fast, would come all into that basin. Right now, it's not anticipated it will melt fast, but that would come, not just water, but all of those trees and everything that's in there would come down.
I'm gonna watch it. I'm gonna watch the depth.
And that's why we keep, we keep going up and down. But Corbett told me that that's a significant, he considers it a significant event that it's collected that much water.
So, yes, Brent, you've, you know, I know Carrie's passionate about this, but this is, you know, this is coming from our city engineer. So, you've spoken with Ted about this, I assume, right?
I'm with you. Today was the first discussion I had about it, too.
So, you know, for me, it comes down to, if this is what our city engineer is saying, and this is why the need is here, I would love a little bit more information, because we do have currently, not from a flooding standpoint, but we have water issues going down Broad Hollow, right, which are cascading into other pools of potential problems, if that's acceptable. Would this help in that regard? Because I know we're, I don't want to get mixed up by saying Broad Hollow Street and Broad Hollow Canyon.
Right.
Right? Are these culverts going down this blue area or through Broad Hollow Street?
The blue area.
They're going down the blue area mostly, wherever it crosses a street.
Okay. And currently, we do not have those.
We currently do not have them.
So, the request is $50,000 in-kind for two, but, so even if it's just Corbett that does it, right, we can get to $50,000 pretty darn quick. I know that's an offset of what the other would be doing, otherwise would be doing.
Yeah.
But we would probably be able to stir up, I know Mark Sauvien would dive in as well, plus a few others. But it's $50,000 for 200, or 150, correct?
And if I'm not mistaken, I mean, this is, again, a crossroads. If we want to complete the flood mitigation, or the fire, the fire flood mitigation project, we have to take this step. So, I mean, this is, this is a crossroads. If we don't approve this, and I'm not, I mean, I agree with the general viewpoint that, you know, these sorts of things, it bothers me that, and I'm not faulting you, Carrie, but it bothers me that it's like a, you gotta do this, you gotta do this right now. I mean, I don't like those kinds of decisions, especially when you're talking $50,000, even if it's just $50,000 of people's time. But I do think that we do need to view this as, if we are going to continue with that mitigation project, this is the next step that has to be taken. So, I think that if we want it, we should take it, and if we don't want to pursue it, and I wholeheartedly appreciate what you said. I mean, and I know that there's beautification that can take place, but it's, I hate the way up by the switchbacks looks right now.
I'm just saying that's, you know, when I drive home and I look up there, I'm like, and I get, I understand.
Right, right, I get it. One of the things, too, is to remember, it's not just about the flow coming down. It is to protect our water tanks. Because if a big avalanche came, this is not designed for avalanche, but it would be mitigated in a way, because we have Ted to do help with the design, that it would shoot that into this basin, and it would protect our water source, which is important. Now, there's a couple of things that I can talk to you about that they, that are some of the questions. Now, the Woodland Hills basted is listed as a mitigation strategy in the Mountain Land Association of Governments' pre-disaster mitigation plan. It's already been put into the county plan as part of this basin and appropriate outlet channel. And so, these culverts are needed.
Where would the basin be built?
It would be built just below the water tanks.
The ones we've been talking about, the big one.
Okay.
Yep, and that's, so it's already in place, because we don't need to buy any property or anything. It is full cost share, meaning that the basin part is completely covered. That's the, that's the majority of the $2 million, is the basin and the channel work. It was just the, these culverts that were taken out, but the state is trying to get the federal government to put those back in, so we wouldn't even have any match at that point. Some of the other questions that have been brought up is, let's see, the hazard mitigation plans that are in the city, again, ours is located in the Mountain Land Association of Governments' plan already, and, let's see, Ted told me some additional information. If he didn't have to go to Elk Ridge tonight, we could have done this a little bit better. Runoff, this is flood protection to the surrounding area by routing flows from larger storms with increased runoff due to upstream denuded, denuded watersheds. So, yeah, it's spelled kind of weird. Watershed, so it's basically protecting our watershed, as well as our water supply, and then homes that may be in the destruction pattern. It's not just for water, which, right now, we're talking flooding, and we're talking about buying sandbags for water, but this would capture most of that water or mud, because we know that the basins are there for debris flow. The water that comes out after the mud starts going down, that's what these channels are for, and that's what the culverts are for, is the conveyance capacity.
And maybe what, so Dave, you're a hard no, right? Are you, are you on the fence at all about this, or are you a hard no?
So, like I said, I'm a hard no on the basin.
Okay.
I don't want...
Which is a hard no on everything, then, because this is a combined package. I wanted to just tell you...
And you're a hard no, too, right, Doral? So, I think that what, I don't know where you stand, Janet, and Ben, I'm getting a sense, Carrie, I know where you stand.
Yeah.
But maybe what we can do is, I mean, this is not a formal vote tonight, anyway, so anybody that has additional questions, and hopefully they can be resolved to your satisfaction, and then you can decide. But if you'll just let me know, if the three of you are willing to vote yes, then we have the votes.
Yeah. Can I, I'm just gonna give this, is what they have as a description of our mitigation. It's replacing 17 existing 12-inch culverts under private driveways with 24 culverts.
Why don't you email them, too?
Replacing four existing 12-inch culverts under public roads with 24 covert, 24-inch culverts. Traffic control and road repair for each of these replaced culverts. Debris basin constructed with NR, NCRS funding at the mouth of Broad Hollow Canyon to collect and slow potential runoff, then redirect water and debris safely through developed residential areas to discharge lower on Broad Hollow where there are no homes and can be safely dispersed, which is our natural drainage.
Don't forget dust.
Right. And that's the, that's some of the things, right, that come into play. But I think the majority of, we're, we're looking at protecting toolers for a different reason and different project. That's important to you. Now, if we had something else that came to below the thing, right, and if we had a huge debris flow and it came to all of those residents below there, and we didn't do, we did nothing, that could be potentially problematic.
We haven't had debris flow in 23 years I've lived here. At that canyon, zero.
We've had two major avalanches.
They've never affected anyone.
Two major, yeah, the one, the one did.
The one came out of the Tooler Canyon.
Right.
That's the only one that came out.
Right. Well, Broad Hollow, the county is telling me that historically, that that has been a problem, and Ted tells me that, that it's been a problem. And so, again...
I look at it this way, Carrie. I mean, everything you're saying is a lot of facts, a lot of information. We built on a mountain.
Yep.
And we knew that we built on a mountain. And so, I just kind of, I'm torn by this idea that we take our environment and shape it, because we made this decision to build on a mountain. It's the same problem that I see with the buildings that got built on the Springville Highway, or on the highway right through Springville over on the lakeside, and I'm like, you know what? I will feel bad this, this spring when those buildings flood. But you know what? They knew that that was a flood plain. When they were building those buildings, they knew it. So, do I feel bad about it? Yes, I do, but at the same time, you know, you kind of, you're complex to making your decisions.
Well, we do know, but, but we have an increased risk because of our burn scar. We do. That is there, whether you think you do or not.
That is wrong. That is totally wrong.
Well, but again, I think that what we need to consider, though, is that the mitigation effort at large is gonna be...
But it's the experts who have said that, not, that's not me saying that. That's experts in the field who are there and have walked our mountain and who understand the growth of...
Time is proof, and we've had enough time now.
No, it's only been five years.
I'm done.
They told us it's up to 15 years.
Yeah, no, I, Ben, you were gonna say something, and...
No, I'm not. Carry on.
Well, so, again, this isn't a vote tonight, so I just think that those of you who are undecided, or maybe a solid yes, you know, get the information from Carrie, from Ted, and so forth, and those that are decided, you know, maybe you'll have a change of heart, or maybe you'll, you know, get some different insight that makes you want to proceed with this, but...
Well, the mitigation for the toolers is a completely separate issue.
Yes, it is.
And we've actually got a plan in place for that.
And we've got to do that.
Yeah. Well, the ball's in their court. We sent them a series of steps that they need to take in order for them to build that thing on city property, so, and they're, they're the ones that have been the delay in that. So, that is moving in.
Okay. That's good news. But the, so, yeah, so I just, to me, that's, that's the thing I, you know, when I think back to the original mitigation project, I, I wish we had done a little better job teasing the different pieces apart, so that we could know, okay, what's the package deal versus what are the independent parts of it? And what do we have to do versus what do we not have to do? And I think we could have maybe had a little better experience with, with that first mitigation project. That's what makes me, you know, when I now hear the same arguments of, well, it's all one thing, and we have to do it or nothing, I'm like, okay, that, that just gives me pause. It makes me think I'm, it makes me feel like I'm being railroaded into a project, and I don't want to be railroaded again.
Fair enough.
Based on the engineering and Ted, I mean, Ted, Ted, Ted's the one who has basically done all of this, right? With, in conjunction with JUB, which is another engineering firm. The way the federal government financing goes and funding, they don't fund with us as a city. They fund because of the project and where the burns were. And so, overall, the first one covered about eight cities, from Spanish Fork Canyon all the way to Payson Canyon. This second phase only involves us and Payson. Everybody else didn't need anything else. But the engineers and the professionals have said, "This will greatly benefit. This is a great benefit to your city and to protecting lives." It's not "and" to protect our watershed, our water source, our water storage. And both Corbett and Ted have told me they are in favor of it, as well as all of the engineering professionals. Now, we can anecdotally say, "Oh, we think it's fine. It's been five years. We haven't really had much." We have up to 15 years to where we can have that. Now, Huntsville, they had an incident 12 years after their fire, and it greatly displaced their city. And it was a huge, big deal, and they hadn't done the mitigation, because they thought they were fine. So, I'm just saying that although I understand your concerns, I also think, as I talk, Chris, are you online, or did you kind of check out?
Um, I'm here.
There you are. You're not asleep yet.
You're anxious, huh?
But, but, you know, as we talked, when I was talking with Chris, as a financial thing, $2 million project for some in-kind donation, or even if we did have to pay the 50, he said over four years, that's not that big of a deal for us, because it can come out of, because it is protecting our water tanks, it could come out of part of water, which we already have a storage, a supply of savings for water issues.
I don't think we're worried about the money. Are we worried about the money?
It's not a way bigger deal.
Yeah, I don't think any of us are worried about the money.
To me, it's giving up, it's giving up a chunk of our city again, that we can't even walk in.
Well, you can. You can, after it's done.
Stop, stop, let me finish. And I love Ted like more than my brother, and I would still vote no on this, for a lot of reasons, and all of them are, when I weigh all that you've given me, and what I believe will happen, and it's, it's a crapshoot both ways, but I firmly believe that $2 million can be spent more productively anywhere else except there.
Well, we wouldn't ever have the $2 million.
I totally believe it.
We wouldn't have the $2 million anywhere else. That's not, that's not an option.
Well, I'd say it's somewhere else. Gosh, give it to those poor people destroying Southern California with snow.
Well, they, they get their money, too.
Well, I'm just saying, I don't want to waste.
Yeah, that's the problem.
Yeah, they get their money.
That is the problem.
But, but what I'm saying, I don't feel it's a waste.
Let me, let's pause this. I think that the debate, we, I mean, we all, so if you could just, if you're gonna swing, then let's, let's, let's just get me the information, if you can get the votes by, you have to have the vote, or you have to have it signed by Thursday?
By Thursday morning. So, I have one, one correction to make on Doral's statement of, "We can't even go in there." Who made the decision that we can't go in there? That was the council. No, that was the council vote.
Well, you told us the Fed said you can't go in there.
Nope, no, 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 no. I didn't say the Fed did.
I'm done talking about this now.
Let me tell you what happened.
No, I'm not interested.
Okay, I'll tell the rest of them.
I don't want to take the time.
I will tell them the rest of this. So, the reason why we made that rule as a council is because the residents who lived around there were worried about too much activity happening around their homes. So, they asked us if we would then put a no trespassing on that for a certain period of time, so that it wouldn't become just a free-for-all of all these people coming and playing in it all the time. We, as a city, after the mitigation time has passed, we can turn it into an amphitheater, we could turn it into your skating rink, we could turn it into soccer fields.
My skating rink.
Right? Yes, your skating rink. We could change it, put it into soccer fields. That's what people do all over the nation. They use their mitigation ponds for other things most of the year. The only reason we did that is because the council voted, because the residents around there were worried about trespassing.
Can we have a reservoir? If you turn it into a reservoir, you got...
Put some fish, uh...
It would already be full of water.
My canoe, my canoe.
My paddleboard.
You really want that much water?
Yeah, I do.
No, I do not.
I do. We could, like, go for a dig a hole.
I would say, if you haven't, schedule a time to meet with Ted and just get his opinion. Because I know we've heard from Carrie, and I hope we've heard from, but if you guys have time, sit down, chat with Corbett, chat with Ted.
Here's my argument against that, is, I mean, I'm a software developer. Bring me a problem, I'm gonna write code. You go to an engineer, he's gonna build something.
Correct.
You know, that's what they do, and I get that, so, to me, that's not a very good argument.
No, it is, in the sense of, if you're wanting the, the experts that, that you wanted here, right, to help you answer your questions...
But I did sit down with Ted for the original mitigation.
Perfect.
I disagreed with him then, and we had a great conversation about it, and he never convinced me. And he and I walked the gully together, and I showed him, "There is no burn at the bottom of that gully. It's never gonna have debris, debris come out." And he says, "Probably not." Well, that's good enough for me. So, I do not think that debris basin up there will ever have what we think it was built for, ever. And the longer we go, we don't, the less likely it will, because the bottom of the gully is intact, has always been intact. Which, that's why we didn't have the flow we had down Lowford Canyon. Man, just in a big rainstorm, right after the fire, they flooded the heck out of Lowford Canyon, and that was just as intact as before the basin was built. We don't need basins in every canyon to screw up our city. And it's not gonna be $50,000. It's gonna be, you're gonna destroy two more trucks. That's what ruined it. There's so many pieces of this construction...
And the ruin.
At Corbett's time...
We don't have to use our trucks.
We don't have the well-finished, we don't, there's so many things I want to focus on, if it were me, instead of spending $2 million of money that I don't want to spend.
Period. Well, and, and I think yours is a fair point, and yours is a fair point, so if you're looking for additional information, we have the resources, but, so, I'm gonna treat this as, it's in limbo, but I need to know by Wednesday evening, so if you have due diligence that you want to do, or, you know, if you, you know, feeling...
Public works yard.
What's that?
Zero.
We haven't even, oh, no, I guess we haven't. We can go back to that after, we had a whole meeting on that. Okay, but Jody, you're, you're not the public.
Do you have some input? I want to hear Jody.
Say your piece. Please do.
I'd love that. Yay.
We can see as a resident.
I love it.
Our, the landscape above our mountain has totally changed. We look out our front window and always see our mounds of dirt. It's, I mean, that's it. The tank used to be hidden a little bit by, you know, foliage, and you wouldn't see it. Now, what we see out our front window is a big mound of dirt with trucks...
No trees.
Going on in the summer. No trees, and I, I'm okay with, I mean, I want residents up there to be protected, and so I was okay with that. If this is gonna protect residents from potential avalanches, things like that, then I guess, you know, I want to help out my neighbor, but I also, I mean, right now, you see, when you go on the freeway, just this big empty, empty hole up there. It's not, it's, and there's been nothing, I mean, and maybe you can't, but, I mean, can we plant trees on the outer edge on the...
Yes, we can do whatever we want.
We need to. When do we create just another public works yard? I mean, that's why the residents wanted that mitigation basin closed off, let's be honest.
They didn't want us, they didn't want us to be parking everything in there. And it, remember, at the time, we weren't gonna haul the dirt up there and make those mounds of dirt. That was never the intention of the first basin. That was something that was brought to the council as a suggestion to save money and also to be able to then have it for other reasons, right? That was not my idea.
Let Jody finish her statement.
That's what came. But, I mean, it's changed the landscape. It's changed what Woodland Hills was known for. It's changed our trail system up there, and if I was a resident and I saw that it was going up next to my house, I would worry that we're just gonna build another public facility up there, or is it gonna be another storage place for trucks or equipment, or how are you gonna rezone it? Because you're gonna have to rezone the property.
When we really have all those Jersey barriers right at the trail, right where the sign, it's ugly and it's a mess. I mean, it needs cleaning.
So, it's gonna take money to beautify it, so you're gonna have to...
Is beautification part of the $2 million?
No.
Only the repair of the culverts. They reseed.
Not the 200, the 2 million.
The 2 million is not to plant trees or anything like that.
So, they do not plant...
They reseed to natural grasses.
What about how much done to the roads with putting culverts in and pulling?
They, they, when they put the new culverts in, all of that road is replaced. Anything else is not part of it.
So if he does the engineering for the crown, like we found on Broad Hollow where it was crowned, when we redid these roads, we crowned them wrong, right? Because the drainage has changed now. Whether it be Woodland Hills Drive, whether it be Lakeview, Broad Hollow.
And that's engineering.
Valley View. Who's gonna cover that cost though? Are we gonna get stuck with that cost? Cause.
Yes, it was our engineering that had it wrong.
Yeah, no project ever comes in though. We know no project ever comes in on budget. So we've gotta come up with the money to do the beautification too.
Yeah.
The last one being it's beautified still.
Yeah, okay. Thank you for that public comment. And you even kept it to two minutes or less. So nicely done. All right. Well, again, so we, we, we've got a Thursday AM. Just let me know.
You said Wednesday PM.
No, I know. We got a Thursday AM signature deadline. So Wednesday PM vote deadline. So.
I'm yes.
Make your case. Yep, I knew your, your, your.
Do I have to still contact you?
Do you have, oh, no, I, I know where you stand. Thank you.
And you know where they stand.
Yeah, I know where they stand. So it's really just the two swing states here. Hey.
The two swingers.
You said that. Hummy. All right. Well, Carrie, let's move on to your next, uh, so the.
Wild card.
The, uh, sandbag, uh, right? That's what.
Yeah, the sandbag. So as we've been talking, I said in, in the public meeting about the sandbags. So we have, um, ten thousand sandbags on hand right now. If we filled all ten thousand, that gives twenty, twenty sandbags to each rep, to each household in town.
Not everybody's gonna want.
No, but we don't, we know that not everybody's going to want them. And so we don't need to fill them. We're only going to purchase sand based on the ones that are needed. But Corbett at, would like to have additional sandbags to put on public infrastructure and roads where we know of known, um, water flow in the past. We wanna make sure that we're not diverting water down to, um, to Lofer Canyon or to Salem. Both of them have already expressed concerns to him about any potential runoff. We don't have a history of flooding in Woodland Hills. And that's what I said in the meeting. But we have had that nuisance flooding, which means, okay, you have a, you know, according to building standards, you can't have a window well that goes on the uphill side.
I have two and they're ground level.
And so those are the things.
Some for.
Right. And so we would have those to be able to place on the people who, and that's why we made this little handout. That said, look at your own home and determine where you would need them.
Can I ask a stupid question?
Forward, yes.
I, I, I love Janet. So be careful. Just, just love me despite what I'm about to say. Is it our responsibility as a city to mitigate the water flows on residential property?
Absolutely not.
No, I'm happy to go buy my own.
Absolutely not. So you can buy.
We have an extremely affluent populace. And I think far too often, and this is me shifting my opinions as well here, but we, we far too often try and step onto the residential side of this, inserting ourselves in civil matters that really aren't civil, right? And so I'm wondering, from our city needs. What does Corbett need as the Public Works Director from a sand and bags standpoint? Do we need more bags?
Uh, no.
Do we need, we need some sand, but I'm wondering, we, we've got ten thousand bags.
We're gonna need that probably for summer.
In preserve. But I just do not wanna present an offering or a hint of an offering that we're providing residents sandbags. When that does not necessarily need to be a budgetary item that we need to.
Well, and that's why we are gonna charge them for them. So that it's, it's an offset. So we're providing a service, we're allowing that to happen.
Energy.
Um.
And there's, we are subsidizing it. I mean, we're not getting, they pay a dollar for the bag and we pay, what'd you say, a dollar fifty?
Yeah, so there's a little bit of that.
This is gonna come back, I wanna talk about recycling in another future meeting, right? I just don't understand why we as a city would ever be in a subsidizing element with our residents having such an affluency. Back to David's point, which. You don't usually persuade me at all, David, but you did well. But we knew, you know, for those of us that built our homes, we knew what we were building. For those of us that bought, we knew what we were buying. Most of us are ignorant on construction, but that's okay. Right? And I think we've gotta kind of reap what we sow. And if, if our city is a helicopter parent, I don't think we're helping anybody. And we're only putting liability on ourselves when we really only need to service what the Corbett's needs are for city land. And making sure we're not diverting water from our land into a resident, then we've got a problem, right? So.
That, that is a good point. And, um, we, we talked about that because we want to make sure that, that people have the ability to, to, to protect themselves. Other cities, I met with emergency managers from all the cities today and I asked them, how much are they providing? Yeah, Salem has their pile of dirt. A couple of others are having sandbag party type things. Giving them out to certain citizens depending on where they live. They have certain zones in their city that they give them out at. Ours, we just, I guess because of our conversation on our text thread the other day, then, um, our committee looked at that and said, what can we do? What do we have on hand and what would it cost?
I think this is beautiful and that meets our obligation. Janet?
I, you know, it, and I, I didn't want it to be like a big complicated thing. I wanted what Salem did. I wanna just, you know, if somebody doesn't feel like they can go get sandbags or just to provide a nice service. It was just a nicety for the community. Um, I didn't want it to be a huge complicated thing. Um, I mean, if we're gonna charge people, they can just go down to IFA.
It's five dollars a bag filled.
And buy some. Yeah, but you can get them filled or whatever, you know, buy them. I, I just thought, I just thought of it as a nicety. And I was thinking one pile of sand, maybe two, whatever bags we had on hand, keep it simple. That's all that I want.
To fill the bags that we have on hand would be a hundred cubic yards.
I don't want it. I wanna just put a pile, not a very big one.
If they want it.
And send some bags, just like Salem, exactly Salem system. I went down there today and talked to the guy. I went to a guy, to, and watched him fill this bag. And I said, what do you think about this? And he says, I need a few bags. And this is the coolest thing our city has done. And, and I said, I think it's incredible. And, and it's just simple. A garbage pan, garbage, big garbage can with some sandbags in it empty, a shovel and a pile of sand. And the gates open. I could've gone in there and filled bags, but it's a trust thing, you know? They, they are doing the right thing. That's all I want. Simple, like Janet used the word.
If we only give out.
Simple.
That if our pile of sand only fills fifty bags, right?
Start with it.
Then we order another pile.
Consider.
But again, if we're keep ordering stuff.
No, no.
Because you just said, order another.
When you run out, you make a decision. Okay, we've done all we can. Go buy them at such and such. And that people will understand.
Just say, this is all we have or this is all we had budgeted.
And if someone, well, I know a few people will come and fill up their three or four bags and we're done. And to me, at least, it's more than nothing. And it's almost what Salem did. You know, I just think Salem's email was incredible. And they emailed every citizen. And there isn't five hundred cars down there lined up picking up sand. There's, you know, it's just. They have some flooding though. You ought to, you can't believe the flooding they're gonna have. But they're doing more than any city I've heard of right now with that little pile of sand down there. And it's a truckload. Honestly, it's not hardly anything. I just think sometimes we do nothing until it's a crisis. And then we as a fire department go down there and we just have a mess. And it's too late. And we're filling bags too late. This is really cool that this week, we're, we're considering putting a truckload of sand and fifty bags out there and let people have at them.
Well, this is one problem that we've talked about with Corbett, Corbett for sure. Um, that people would feel that they needed to put them on the streets. And that would divert to other people, which would be a liability for us. If somebody hit that pile of, if it was put on the streets like we, cause people think of sandbags as if what was after the fire. We put them a lot on the streets because it was mud flow. We weren't worried about, not water flow. If a, if a snowplow truck hits sandbags that are on the road, it would damage them severely. And could that damage hurt a snowplow driver?
I think that's, that's way different than what we're talking about. I think a window well is different than.
And so that's why we're trying to say, that's, that's why we have this thing to say, you can only put it on your own property. You can't put it on anything else, right? And, um, and the city then would put them on places now. Right now, we have too much snow to put any sandbags out. Corbett will not put any bags out until we have less snow, because it, we, it's not beneficial. People right now, their window wells are full around snow. Um, it's not melting yet. And those sandbags become ineffective because they're wet sand. It freezes and it becomes a brick. And it doesn't do its job. And they degrade too easily. So we've been advised by the professionals who do sandbags all the time, not to fill them yet.
But what, so Peter, has he, has he weighed in on, I mean, cause what I would, I, what I, none of us are emergency managers. None of us, I don't think can be expected to anticipate the way this disaster will unfold, if there is such a thing. But I, I, what I, what I would like to do is I would like to get their specific guidance from the county where they're saying, okay, hillside communities, this is what you should be doing. If this is what they're saying, then we, I mean, I think you guys are a great point. Do, do we just tell people and then say, here's one pile of sand and the rest is up to you?
I don't think that many people would get on that.
Peter, Peter said that, um, it's too soon for Woodland Hills. I talk to Peter every single day. There hasn't been a day that I don't talk to him.
Is he raising alarms though?
Nope, he has no alarms.
My house with no snow and water running to my, to my window wells?
He said, um, that the major part of it.
Fine, but.
But he said it's too soon to get the water. When I talk about having sand here, there's the problem that again, if the sand freezes and it's not picked up yet, it could impede. What Ted and I talked about today was the ability to use our trucks. Because we have the snowplow trucks, we also have our fire trucks. If we're, depending on where this, the sand is placed here at the city center, it could impede either of those two things. Now we put it up here, we still have too much snow. We don't even have enough parking for regular people right now, because there's so much snow. And so as that sand would just get wetter and wetter, and, and even if we covered wet sand with a tarp, it still could freeze and become that hard brick and become unusable.
So but I, I think the way you're, so your approach, as you and I spoke about today, Carrie, is you, you want to work in conjunction with local ecclesiastical leaders and deposit sand piles in specific areas and have district leaders.
Get them.
Uh, come and utilize it. And, and then I guess we provide a limited number of sandbags. Whereas you were proposing, the two of you, um, basically one pile of sand, a garbage bag full of, uh, empty sandbags. I mean, so it seems like that, am I, is that a fair assessment? Those are basically the two approaches that we have to consider.
One of the things that the county.
I'm kind of on board with Carrie. I mean, time changes things. Today, alls I want is a small pile of sand with a few sandbags, just a few. And we see if some citizens use them, cause I know some will. And let them, put them in their yards where they feel threatened. And they feel that today. And you're right, there's still snow. But I know people, especially in this environment, everybody's in preparation for everything. We should be prepared for stuff that's not today, but coming up.
And that's what we're trying to do.
Is that our, is that our role at today's point? I can't remember what the team's all about.
Maybe it's not. And I could go that way too.
Oh, matter of fact.
I, I could agree that it's not our job as a city. I just see it as, this is a positive thing. Here's a pile of sand. Come get it. First come, first served. When it's gone, it's gone.
I just saw it as a.
And, and we just try that. I mean, let's just try it and see.
Getting stakes involved and that's just.
And if they put them in the street, I'm gonna go pick them up and take them somewhere else.
I'll tell you why. Right. So this is the, this is the multiple, um, viewpoints that I've had. So the first meeting that started with this is because of my ecclesiastical calling, had a meeting with the, um, area seventies. They said, hey, how can we, as, all of the stakes want to be involved in helping out with flooding?
You told us this earlier, yeah.
And, and that's why this started. And to say, every emergency manager talked to the stakes. We want to be the ones that help organize the volunteers. And that's why that part came into being. The second part came from, from Peter saying, if you're going to do this, have it in localized areas throughout your city so that the, because one of the problems we had that last time with doing sandbags, for any of you who were here, um, is the congestion. The congestion of, and the dust and the dirt and everything else. But it was very congested on, on the area. And so if we had the sand piles placed in strategic locations throughout the city, then you would have a smaller group of people coming to those things. The third thing is, is using the QR codes. The QR code would show us, because it is a city resource. And that is an expense to us, whether we wanna say it or not. It is an expense to us. Then that would say, who actually wants them? Who, who needs them? Because we might have some people who would want to bring them to the widows or whatever, right? District leaders could know who those people are. Um, but also so that we are only giving them to citizens. Because there have been incidences in other areas where non-residents are taking it, which isn't fair to your own taxpayers. Now with that, also having, um, that ability then to capture how much sand we need, because we don't want to deliver too much, but we also don't wanna deliver too few. Now if we say, okay, we're giving out a hundred bags, first come, first served, that might be more of a run like on toilet paper. Um, it may not. But do we have risk the idea of, well, you, I didn't read my email till the end of the day and the people who read it at ten AM when the email went out, all came and got all hundred. And now you aren't giving them to the rest of us. Is that discrimination?
But that would be a pretty easy thing to remedy. I mean, if you do get one pile of sand, a few bags, and if there is a run on it, then.
Then we make another decision.
Yeah, you make another decision.
I mean, I, I.
If you buy a ton of, a bunch of sand and then nobody, I, I don't.
That's right. That's why I don't wanna do it that way.
I don't wanna buy a book. And I, I don't know. I just feel like it's getting over complicated.
I just gave you the full amount of sand that it would take to fill all of our bags. Not that we would do that many, that we would only do it based on the people who actually wanted it.
And honestly, I mean, if the city offered them and everybody else got the sand and the sandbags, I'd say, okay. And I'd go down to IFA and I'd buy some. Not a big deal.
This is, this is not a field to die on.
So. When I got that firestorm of, of a, uh, emergency thread, I really was spending most of my day biting my tongue.
Well, let's have it.
We are not Salem. We live on a mountain that has a slope.
And it runs down.
And it runs away. Salem has a different problem in that they've built some properties where the water is actually coming up from underneath the ground. And that's a different problem. I, I know in saying this that I'm probably gonna get castigated, but I've lived here twenty-three years. Not once have I seen a flow from snow.
Never. In thirty, thirty-three years.
You don't know where I do. I'm at the bottom.
I have seen it.
On your own property.
I have seen it a lot from rain. And so I'm very concerned about rain, you know, when we get those really monster rainstorms.
In the summer.
We do have problems. But the snow just seems to kinda, you know, go down. And so.
I see your water, Dave. I promise.
I'm, I'm, I'm.
There. I have a river. I will have a river.
And I'm not doubting you. I'm, I'm not trying to doubt anyone or, or to say anybody's right or wrong. I'm just saying, I sat there watching that entire thread and I was just like going, have we lost our minds?
Well, you notice I got real quiet.
Is it that hard to, to, to pick one side or the other though? What, what do you think the city should do?
I mean, I mean, here, here's the thing. We want, I believe, and I, I, I really do believe this, that we want to be helpful. The hard part is balancing help with overreach. And that's one of the easiest things that governments do all the time, is they overreach. And they say, we have the power, we have the authority, therefore we're going to do, you know, all of this stuff. That's actually why I recommend it. If we get sand, let's put some up by the park. Because if we don't use it, we can put it on the volleyball court or something, you know, at least make use of it.
Horseshoe pit.
Horseshoe pit, whatever. I, I'm just like, let's not. I, I'm just like, let's not go crazy here and just do things to do things. Um, now, I love the idea that the city has sandbags in boxes. I love that, I think we ought to always have that, and we should make sure that we always have, you know, 10,000 to 20,000 bags in boxes. But we should wait until we know more before we go into full attack mode and start filling sandbags and putting them on pallets and staging them in, in, in barns.
And I don't think there's any disagreement on that.
There's no disagreement on that.
I'm with you, no.
I'm just saying, that's, that was part of the thread. And, and I, and that was the part of the thread that I was really uncomfortable with.
Wait, which part, did I write it? I'm just joking.
But, but that's one reason, so just so you know, based on our thread, that's why I called together the Emergency Management Department, volunteers and specialists, and talked to the county to say, "What would be the best way to go about this?" And it is just what you said, not wasting resources, not filling prior, because our city is unique and different than other cities.
Yes, and, and that's the only concern I have, and again, I want to say this respectfully, because I, I do respect all the time that you put in to this, but again, I don't think that we gain much by talking to the Salem City Manager.
Oh, I didn't talk to him.
Or the Payson City Manager, or the Springville City Manager, because their problems are very, very different from ours. I think we gain, I, I, I do respect Peter Quitner and his group of experts.
This is his group.
Because they, they're doing a, they're, they have a little broader view. But still, I just, again, I, I just, I just think, I, I just think, I was, I was like looking at that and I was going.
When I say we have these meetings with all the emergency managers, that doesn't mean that we're talking about what our city should do specifically. It's more about the general idea of what is happening around the county. Like today's meeting, I said exactly, "We have snow right now. We don't have historic flooding throughout our city." I've lived here over 30 years now, and I have never seen historic flooding. Our snow melt is small enough, we have those nuisance floodings, and we have specific floodings to certain locations, but it doesn't necessarily flood our city, which is two different types of things, right, incidents. Now, Salem could have, Spanish Fork by the River could have, right? They're totally different than us. Our situation where the sun hits our mountain is different than everywhere else. And so I'm, I'm okay with us, I'm not the person that panics. So I don't think we need this, I'm okay if we say, "You know what, we changed our mind and we're not going to provide them." I'm okay with that. Just giving them the resource of how to place them if they do, and tell them that they cannot place it on city property.
I'm gonna just say, my original text says, I do have a question, do we, it's just a question. Do we need to be worrying about flooding in the spring? And then I just talked about how I'd read a story. It is my fault, but all I said was, "Do we need to be worrying about flooding in the spring?" It was a valid question.
It is a very valid question.
And, and, no, I'm just joking.
And it kind of blew up into this big thing.
And I said, "Yes, we do."
I just want to make sure that we have a plan. I, 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 I don't have a dog in this race myself, I just think that if, like, my concerns are if there's gonna be a run on, I thought there'd be a run on sand. And Carrie has assured me that there's not a concern about that. There may be a run on bags, so we did authorize the purchase of, uh, a $2,500 purchase for 10,000 more bags. We can store those as long as we need. But it's, I, I just think that next steps, in my mind, if the county says, "Well, this is what you need to be doing," I think that we should adopt it. If they don't, I am totally fine with a very simple approach, whether we offer sand and a few bags or not, and just say, "Here's what you ought to be doing." I'm fine with that, I just want to make sure that we have a clear direction that we're going.
One additional thing. I do think we need to be prepared, and we should, if asked, or even if not asked, we should go help Salem. And we should go help Spanish Fork if they need it, and we should go help, um, Springville.
Okay, that's a great point.
Because.
They're gonna get our runoff.
They're going to need it, and more importantly, that's just being a good neighbor, and they were such great neighbors to us. So we need to be good neighbors to them.
They are, and I'm actually wor, more worried about potential, um, debris flow, mudslides in, in that, into July, first part of August, when we typically have those monsoon rains. That's when our threat is greatest. Um, right now, according to the experts, we're meeting with the hydrologist on Thursday, but according to the experts, only if we get a really, really warm rain that comes down as a massive thunderstorm onto our snow, that could potentially turn into a quick melt. But even if it was a light rain and it's cold, it's not gonna flood.
So, so moving forward then, so you're gonna be doing it on Thursday, so we're gonna get the bags, and then.
We might not get them on that day, but we'll order them, we're ordering them.
But we'll take that step, and so, and that's where we'll leave it for now, right?
Yep, that's all we're saying.
That's, is that a good stopping point?
Yep.
Everybody, okay, you don't even want the bags, do you?
By the way, thank you for asking the question.
Yeah.
I just asked the question.
It is a very valid question, and we should be asking those types.
With record snow, do we need to, you know, worry? And since I've lived here, it's probably only been a couple of winters that we've had this much snow usually. The last several years, what, five or six years, it's been kind of dry.
Very dry.
Been a drought, but before, this was kind of the norm in the nineties.
I mean, my dog just walks over the fence now and comes and goes as she wants.
Mary, to answer your question, I think getting our supply of bags to David's point, I agree as well, to 20,000, I think's a brilliant move.
Okay, so we'll, we'll do that, and then, I mean, this, uh, warm rain, I mean, I, I don't know, there's any way we could predict that. And I don't know that we could do anything if it did.
Just so you know, so I get it, uh, an email every morning about the national, from the National Weather. Goes through all of the EMs, we get that. Ted also gets something as our engineer, so that we know if there's gonna be a cell over us at any particular moment of time, they alert us directly.
Every time I read the weather app, it's wrong.
It's, yeah, it's not their app. But this is, this is the state meteorologist. And, and if you remember during the fires, I don't know if you remember, the state meteorologist actually came and stood here at, in Woodland Hills, and he and the chief would talk back and forth and be on different parts. And the meteorologist would say, "The cell is coming, it's going to be here in this many minutes." And then the cell would, would move, and he said, "Okay, it shifted." And it can shift in five to 10 minutes to a different location, and it was really, really critical. And that's why we did so many sandbags, is because that cell was coming to us, and it shifted at the last moment. So we don't know, but we can be prepared, but I don't feel that there's a threat to us now at all.
All right, well then let's, if, if agreed, let's just take those steps and, uh, we'll take another step.
I'll, I'll buy my neighbor's bags, it's no problem.
Well, maybe buy them from us for a dollar and then sell them for two.
No, five to him.
Flood profiting. All right, um, so.
If you sign some documents, saying we wouldn't do that.
Oh, that's right. All right, so we are not to vote on the consent agenda. So we'll skip that. Uh, construction of West Lofer, so that's really the only thing.
I make a motion to approve that.
Okay, so, so just to be clear, so you are making a motion to move forward approving Ted's middle tier approach.
And finish the engineering, put it out to bid, and then, and then, once we get the bids back, I think we should have another vote where we decide to move forward with it or not.
Okay, so we'll split the, the decision up into engineering first and then vote on construction. Got that, Jody?
I think you said engineering, put it out to bid.
Yeah, because we, we would have to vote on the bid anyway.
Oh, okay.
We'd have to choose.
I'm not really saying anything different.
We'd have to choose which bid we're gonna go with.
Right, we'll have gone up, right.
Okay, well, Dave just took a simple statement and made it complicated, so.
I'll second that complicated statement.
I do that a lot.
I'll second that complicated statement.
Okay, uh, the motion by Councilmember Pratt, seconded by Councilmember Lund. Roll call, Jody? Okay. Just to be safe, all right, Councilmember Lund?
Yes.
Councilmember Kinnison?
Yes.
Councilmember Pratt?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilliard?
Yeah.
Councilmember Mountbridge?
Yeah.
Okay, that motion carries. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, a motion by Councilmember Pratt.
Seconded, yeah.
Seconded by Councilmember Kinnison, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion, motion carried, meeting.
By the way, Jody, was it you that remained, remembered that it was Pi Day?